Okay, it is 5:30 on April 23rd, 2025. I'll call this meeting of the Morton County Planning and Zoning Commission to order. Start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
In the land of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Natalie, can we switch to online for the roll call? I don't think everybody's here except Jackie.
I think it won't be.
Any word from Carter?
I don't know about Carter, he didn't RSVP.
Okay, so Braun.
Here.
Wald.
Here.
Zachmeyer.
Yes.
L.
Here.
Buckley is absent. Tomac.
Here.
Berger is absent. And Roar.
Here.
So, missing Buckley and Berger. All right, approval of tonight's agenda.
I move to approve the agenda for the March 26th meeting.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the minutes from March 26th.
I move to approve the minutes as read.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, item number one, Natalie.
Our first item is revisiting the Shock subdivision. This is in the east half of Section 35, Township 139 North, Range 82 West. We had looked at this once before. The original version was asking for a residential lot right here. The applicant has revised the request. So now, essentially, we have two exempt agricultural tracts, and then one industrial tract for the Mandan landfill. These would be allowed without a subdivision process at all. Really, the only reason this is coming back to planning and zoning is so that the county can accept the right-of-way corridor that they are dedicating, and the utility easements on each side of the road. Otherwise, it more or less would be an exempt plating process. The only difference, I guess, on the industrial lot for the landfill, they're adjusting the property boundary for that corner. So that also is a reason to go through a subdivision process, but very, very minor changes. And staff would recommend just approving this.
All right, any questions for Natalie? Questions for Natalie? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this item? Second call for the hearing. Yeah, go ahead, Pat.
Pat Cano, I'm a neighbor up there. You said industrial is the furthest to the north. That's going to be, you're changing that to industrial?
It's just the landfill. The landfill itself is part of the plat.
So, as far as the pasture itself, half of it's going to be residential?
No, two egg parcels. So they're both 35 acres, which is the minimum to remain egg zoning. Is that right, Natalie?
So, they're still talking about building a house on it? One house on there?
So, each egg parcel, yeah, go ahead, Natalie. I'll let you do it.
To answer that question, any egg parcel has an automatic entitlement to construct a residence. So, but the plating process for an egg lot doesn't require county approval. Like, if you have 70 acres, you can split it in half just by right. I have to review it, and the county engineer signs it, but it doesn't have to go through an approval through the county.
So, can you specify what side they're going to build a house on?
So... So, these two parcels would be the two egg parcels. So, potentially, they could have a home on either one of these. Right now, anyone could have a home on the larger parcel that's existing, just by virtue of it being an egg parcel. You could already put a house on it, but now they're planning to split this up, and you could potentially have two homes. This is already industrial, the whole thing. It's just the lot boundary used to go, I'm not sure where it used to go. It's just redefining that top corner. Yeah. It used to be squared off here, and it's just going to carry over there just a little bit. That's the change. Like, this purple is all industrial already. This is all egg. Actually, everything that's greenish is egg already.
Does that help, Pat?
Thank you.
George Stroll, my neighbor out there. Just off of this development or agricultural land. When I put my place in, I had to get a two-acre rural subdivision, and I have 40 acres. How can this be 35 acres agriculture and they can still get a house on it?
Yeah, Natalie, I'll let you.
So, just answering to the mics so everybody can hear. A lot of times, it's a lender requirement that you have to have a smaller piece to put a house on.
Mine was county.
Okay. And that was probably a very long time ago, I'm guessing. More than 10 years.
More than 20.
Yeah. And our code has been updated. Like, our code got a major update in 2014. So that could be why. Since 2014, I mean, I started in 2014, and that was, or, sorry, 2015. The code had been updated the year before. Our minimum acreage for egg is 35 acres. And, yeah, every egg parcel has entitlement to construct a home. It's just a lot of times, people will break off a piece anyway because their lender won't, they don't want to lend on that much acreage.
Mine, mine was county.
Okay. Yeah, it's been changed since then.
My next question is...
Just talking to the mic, just, yeah.
Why do they always include the landfill in this parcel when that was sold 30 years ago?
Natalie, I'll let you take it again.
So, they didn't have to include the landfill in this. It was more so just so that, so the city of Mandan, they own that property, and they are participating in this just so that a corridor can be established for the right-of-way and a utility easement, and square off the corner to meet the new right-of-way corridor. That's really the only reason that that is included in this plat at all.
Yeah, that works?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Leonard Langang, neighbor to the west of this property. I have been in charge of that property for, I've been renting it for probably eight to 10 years. And I have dealt with the garbage on that property. This unbearable. I have an outstanding bill for the city of Mandan for 2023 where they refused to come out and pick up the garbage after over three months period where I talked to them, said, "This is all emails, texts, back and forth." I have hundreds of pictures I took where they refused to go down into the gullies and pick up the garbage that was in the stinky water. All they wanted to do is they wanted to get the stuff on the top that was plain, clean, easy to do. And I, like I said, I sent them messages back and forth. If you don't clean it up, if I do it, it's going to have to cost $100 an hour. I don't work for free. Well, ended up, I had to work for free because they refused to go down. I sent messages exactly where the garbage was. Commissioner Roar, he saw pictures that I took of the garbage mess. And I have, like I said, I have hundreds of pictures that I took of these stinky styrofoam broken stuff. Now you want to put two houses right where that garbage is going to blow? The city, and then the city goes and sent people with criminal records onto my property to pick up garbage without informing me. These were people from CIS. I don't know what kind of records they had, and they never once told me. And then, the one time when I talked to Brian Dirk, he said right to my face, "How do I know that garbage is coming from the Mandan dumps?" You want to make somebody a bad neighbor, say that to them. Especially after I picked up lots of garbage where I never got paid for. If I was driving around the pasture, I would pick up the garbage. Well, now, all of a sudden, because I raised a stink about it, and they, like I said, I have an outstanding bill for over $1,700. I don't work for free, but I had to work for free because the city refuses to pay me. I mean, I don't know why anybody would want two houses right there from that landfill because that is right where all the wind blows, all the garbage blows, and then now the compost smell blows right that way, too. To me, I really don't want two houses on that property. I mean, I don't know why, I don't know. I don't know why anybody would want to build a house there personally. It's that dumps is an eyesore when you're driving by it. I see it. When I get to my yard, I don't see it because I have enough trees. But that is the biggest eyesore, and to me, that dumps is mismanaged. They got people from CIS coming out and picking up garbage inside, but they don't worry about the garbage that's all the way out from Mandan all the way on Highway 10. You've got farmers out there that are ready to go in the field. There's big pieces of plastic in their fields because the city doesn't come out and pick up their garbage. They just don't take responsibility for that landfill mess they make.
Thanks, Leonard. Okay, I'll do second to last call for the hearing. Final call, and I will close the hearing. Commissioners, your wishes? So now, they ultimately, well, I mean, we're approving the whole thing, but we're really, it's in front of us because of the road right-of-way and the utility easements.
Correct. Basically, you know, if you're not counting the little tail on the industrial property, which you could say more or less doesn't matter, they could be doing an exempt plat for these two, the two egg lots without even coming to this board. So really, this is just purely going through this process so that, because the county can't accept right-of-way and utility easements without going through a plating process. So, pretty much, that's the purpose of going through this.
And we'd rather it occurred this way than the other way, right?
Yes, for sure.
Yeah, go ahead, Becky. Just grab one of the mics.
I was just wondering about the people online. Was there anybody that needed to speak?
Okay, so the hearing is closed, but I guess I didn't specifically call for online. So if there is anybody online that would like to speak, go ahead and take yourself off mute. Okay, not seeing any. I am ready for motion.
Mr. Chairman, being this is a focused motion, we're looking strictly at the dedication, right-of-way, excluding these other issues that may come into play here. I move to recommend approval of the final plat of the short-form subdivision on our Shock subdivision for the purpose of accepting a dedicated public right-of-way and utility easement.
Second.
All right, motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Not seeing any. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number two, Natalie.
Our second item is the Idetree subdivision. This is in the southwest quarter of Section 11, Township 140 North, Range 89 West, located about a half mile north of the former town site of Haymarsh. So, kind of out by, in between Hebron Glen Olin. The applicants are Brian and Cheryl Wery. They are looking to divide one residential lot from a quarter section. So, this is just 6.42 acres. Because in this location, the section line is offset from the actual center line of the road. You know, usually, your section line kind of matches up with the center line of the road. The road's a little offset here. So, this went to road commission. The applicant was willing to just dedicate, because they own the land on both sides, to just dedicate the whole corridor so that the corridor will be centered on the road. And they have, then, just a little bit less of a right-of-way dedication on this property than they would usually have. So they have a little more room for their building setback. So, with that, staff recommends approval and rezoning to residential. And I can take any questions.
Questions for Natalie. Okay, if there aren't any questions for Natalie, I will go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Second call for the hearing. And anybody online can just take themselves off mute and speak up. Third and final call. Okay, I will close the hearing. Ready for motion.
I move to recommend approval of the plat of the short-form subdivision known as Idetree subdivision in a zoning map amendment from agriculture to residential as the subdivision conforms to the regulations established in Article 7 of the Morton County Land Use Code and conforms to the land use priorities established in the 2045 Comprehensive Plan.
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number three.
Our next item is the Stern 4th subdivision. This is in the southwest quarter of Section 24, Township 139 North, Range 84 West. Located about a mile and three-quarters southeast of Sweetbrier Lake. The applicants are Rick and Kathy Stern and a number of other parties. So, they are looking to, so you can see, we have some scattered residential here. They're looking to reconfigure the entire quarter. We have an existing residential lot here. They had, the quarter was separated into two very large parcels, and then this was separated off as a non-conforming piece. So, what they're doing essentially is just redefining that lot, making this new lot, and then have the bigger, much bigger acreage, and then one residential lot there. So, usually, if you have three lots or more, that counts as a long-form subdivision. Their request is to be able to just process this as a short form since we have an exempt lot and then a lot that was already residential. So really, we're just creating two new residential lots. That was staff's suggestion so that they can essentially just get started with construction on one lot. Because this already has a house on it. This has a house on it. That has a house on it. So this is just the new, the new lot. That might be a little easier to see. So we've just got really large acreage and then three residential lots there. So, 36 and 1/2 Avenue comes down. That is a dedicated corridor all the way through here. But the description of that right-of-way, when you get to this east-west segment, it wasn't very well defined, whether that's on the section line, centered on the section line. So with this plat, we're trying to get a better definition of what that right-of-way is. We brought this to road commission, and they suggested maybe 40 feet because it's kind of acting like a subdivision road. As it goes to the east, it's going to hit a cooley, and that road will never go all the way through. It's pretty much just serving one farmstead. It could be argued for 50 feet, 33 feet, 40 feet. Road commission suggested 40. So that's, the plat is the 33 that was existing before the plating process, but that can be changed to 40 if that's what Planning and Zoning Commission thinks would be best. And I know, I think the applicant's representative will probably make an argument for that. So, basically, four-lot subdivision, one egg parcel, and three residential lots. Staff is recommending approval. And I can take any questions.
Questions for Natalie.
Mr. Chairman, looking at the suggestion motion, it does say variance. So what's the hardship?
Trying, I guess, trying to capitalize on construction season since it would be a two-month process. And one of those lots is a lot that generally wouldn't have to be included in a subdivision. And one was an existing residential lot, which also didn't have to be included in the subdivision, but more so as a courtesy to the county to redefine the right-of-way that's north of it.
Well, can an argument be made that this is how variances got us into trouble in the past?
In this case, I don't think so because it's really just a process variance. And I suggested it would be a good idea. I think to make them go through a long-form process when one of those lots is agricultural, and then the other lot was included for our benefit, I think that's not exactly fair.
Andy, I might recommend that we, I mean, if, in my mind, it's procedural, and we can see, do we have other concerns, right?
And then revisit.
If there are concerns with the board or the public, maybe I'd be less apt, more or less apt. Maybe that influences whether we grant a variance for the process because this, that variance sort of dictates whether or not this comes back to us again, right? That's the one month.
Correct. One month versus two month.
Variances have gotten us into trouble many times. Tolcashe Timberhaven comes to mind. One's up on North 1806, where, well, we'll just release this little bit, everybody be quiet, and then all of a sudden, everybody's mad. I don't like to use variances in this way, but we can continue.
Andy, I'll just note, I agree with you with true variances. Procedural like this, maybe I feel a little less strongly, but I do agree with having a true hardship for most variances. Okay, where were we? Any other questions for Natalie? Okay, not seeing any. I will go ahead and open the hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Mark or the applicant, I'll give you the first shot.
Good evening. Mark Isaacs with Independent Land Surveying and Engineering. Where to start? So, to talk about the 36 and 1/2 Avenue right-of-way coming into there, that was granted back in the 50s by the owners at that time to the county in a deed. So the county has 66 feet of a deed that runs that whole quarter section to the east-west center of the section. So that is not a section line. It's the east-west center line of the section, and then goes to the east line of that quarter. So, in the description of that, it's, when it gets down to that south line, it's vague on whether it was supposed to go to the center of the section line or to the edge of it. Based on where the road is, I concluded that their intent was to go to the center line of the section. And so it's 33 feet on each side of that center line section. So that's, that's my take on it with that being what the county has now. They don't have any, you know, plans to improve it. So I don't know that there's any need for any additional right-of-way. I guess to talk a little bit about that lot. So presently, that's an existing lot without saying too bad things. It was done poorly when it was platted because they don't even show that right-of-way on that. So it doesn't even show that it abuts up to that right-of-way. So, I guess if this becomes a contention of getting this plat done, then I would recommend taking that out of the plat. We don't have to deal with that now. We can, we can take the boundary around that, and then it would comply to the ordinance. And that can just be a mess and just leave it that way. That would be better than, you know, spending two months to get this approved. So, the west and the south boundary of that lot is fine. So we could, you know, we could adjust that and not include that if it's, if there's too many lots. That would be, that would be my concession if that's an issue. But, you know, in this case, it just makes sense. We're doing really procedural cleanup, and you've got the owners that are willing to try to correct the issues. And I think it's a good thing. Other than that, I would take any questions that anybody would have.
Questions for Mark.
The only other question I would have, I think, in terminology, Natalie, I guess, can speak to it. The word "variance" seems pretty drastic to me in this case because I wouldn't know why the plan commission or commission wouldn't have the, you know, authority or the ability to say, you know, this is a benefit to the county to take care of this and, you know, do it, you know, from a procedural standpoint. But I don't know. That's my two cents.
Okay, just so I'm understanding, the 40-foot right-of-way, so that's...
So, yeah, I guess what, what the road commission is saying that typically, in a subdivision setting, if you're doing 40-lot subdivision, we create 80-foot right-of-ways. So, in this case, you know, back in that day, it was a 66-foot right-of-way because that's just a section line easement. just a section line easement. So what the road commission is saying, well, why don't we make it a full 80 feet, 40 feet that we can get right now? And then if anything's ever done, you would get 40 feet on the other side. And that, my suggestion is, in this case, the road isn't going to go anywhere because of the terrain going east. And so it's, you know, I just don't see the need for the additional right of way, but that's up to discussion.
Does that cover it, Natalie? Thanks, Mark.
Yeah, so when we went through our exercises, the county, I want to say, maybe 2021, somewhere around there, 20 or 21, we designated all the improved segments of road in the county and said what width of a corridor we wanted in case subdivisions came along on any of those corridors. So this 36 and 1/2 was designated as a 50-foot from center line corridor, even though it just exists as a 33. And so, you know, but as Mark said, this road is never going to go, so there's a farmstead here and there's a road that goes up to the farmstead, but the terrain gets really difficult beyond that, so that road isn't going to go much farther. So, you know, we're looking at it and it's kind of like, well, do you really need 50 feet there? Do you, is 33 fine? You know, we have it designated as 50. So we went through a whole discussion and I don't think it's super hard and fast any which way, but when we had to just say, okay, let's make a decision and move on at road commission, it was like, okay, 40 feet makes sense for a subdivision, more like a subdivision road. So.
Thanks, Natalie. Okay, second call for the hearing. Natalie, can you switch it back to online? Okay, third and final call for the hearing on Stern 4th. And if anybody online would like to speak, go ahead and do that now. Last call in the room. All right, I'll close the hearing.
Mr. Chairman, just going back to what Mark was talking about, and he was, he was talking about some concession, right? So how would our motion have to be revised then to meet that particular concession is my question?
Are you talking about the right of way?
With the dropping a lot so that it would technically not need to be a long form?
How would the, how would we, how'd have to, what would have to be, what revision to our motion here would have to come about to consider that?
So I have in your packet, two different motions. One is to approve a variance to the process and then the second one is for the subdivision. And I guess what I would say is, there are areas of the county where lots have been allowed to be approved in either configurations or either the work wasn't checked and things like that, and it is kind of a mess. And whenever we have opportunities where landowners are willing among multiple parties to cooperate and clean it up all on one plat, where all of the property lines come together in one plat so that it's very clear where the boundaries are, I think that that's a service to our record and all the property owners, which is why I encourage that to happen. Really, this landowner, all they want to do is make one residential lot to build one house. So really, it could be a one lot subdivision. But because of the way the quarter is cut in half, which who knows why that was done, there, you know, there's weird configurations all over the county to just combine those together, which could be done by any regular plat. Doesn't have to be on here. And then there's a non-conforming lot. You know, what do you do with that? It's already got a house on it. I guess it's an opportunity to bring that into conformity. So this is why I guess staff is suggesting that it's very reasonable in the effort to clean up property boundaries when really the applicant just wants one residential lot, but they're willing to go through a lot more effort to clean up property boundaries in the area. And I guess it's not really a huge benefit to them, other than bringing lots into conformity, but a way to clean up the record, I guess.
Okay, so the motions, as you have listed then, would that pretty much meet what, after two, Mark, or not?
Well, so if the commission did not want to approve this as a short form subdivision and wanted to say it shouldn't have four lots in it if it's not going to go through a long form process, then the commission would suggest, you know, which lots should be included in a subdivision? And then you would just approve those lots or say, you know, plat needs to be revised to just include those two lots or one lot.
Okay.
And then you wouldn't have to have a motion about a variance.
Okay, I was just driving in the fog for a little bit here.
Yeah, I mean, I do, like I said, I agree with Andy's concern about the term variance.
Yeah.
In this case, it seems like the benefit is to the county or the public.
Correct.
In general, and in the absence of concerns, I don't know why we would belabor this another month.
That was my thought, too. And I have to agree with Commissioner Zachmyer. I really am uncomfortable with variances in terms of form, but when it's property owners trying to clean things up, not necessarily exactly for their own benefit, and it's a concession, I feel like they make a concession, we can make a concession. And any way in which we treat something different than what exactly is listed in the code is a variance. That's just, it's different than what the code says.
And so Natalie, the motions as written are for maintaining the 33-foot right of way or...
It doesn't specify.
But the plat has 33 feet.
Yes, correct. So if you're just accepting it as it's presented, then it would be 33 feet.
So if we wanted to go with road commission, we'd have to change that otherwise as written.
It's 33.
It's 33.
Correct.
Okay, is anybody ready to make a motion?
Ms. Chairman, I, when you have bad law, the only way to fix it is to create good law. And this is not creating good law. This should go forward through, if we're truly going to fix this area, it needs to go through a long form subdivision. If there is a time constraint about starting construction, then we call special meetings, no different than what we did when all of a sudden somebody wanted a cemetery and wanted us to give variances because someone was about to die and they wanted their special cemetery. We ended up starting to call special meetings. The biggest example that I've seen where nobody noticed it before we had good planners is the area of Matt's Drive north on North 1806. Because those lots in that area came in as one lot subdivisions, one after another, after another. Nobody noticed it. By the time it was done, we had a gentleman try to put a feedlot up there. Then it just, the whole thing more or less caved in until we could get it straight. I agree with everything that they said. I agree with the 40-foot easement that the road department is requesting. There's good background in engineering on the road department. If there's a, they want a 40-foot reason, there's probably a reason for it. But I cannot in good conscience continue bad law. So if it, this whole thing needs to be a long form subdivision, otherwise I can't support it.
Well, Mr. Chairman, in my view of this here, it's a matter of vocabulary, too, to a certain extent, in terms of what a variance is and how it applies, there could be multiple situations. Some of them are pretty clean cut, some may not be. This, what I understand, is more procedural. So it depends whether you want to throw it on one bucket or say, okay, there's different buckets here we have to deal with. I think we have different buckets to deal with myself. That's just my view.
Yeah, I guess I'll just note in cases like this, I don't know that I, I think I prefer to keep it at 33 feet. I agree with Mark on the terrain and in some cases, it just feels like we're unnecessarily taking seven feet. So it's my two cents.
Well, Mr. Chairman, we could also move to send this back to the planner for more work. That's also an option.
That'd delay us a whole nother month.
I'd rather do it right than have it halfway's.
So I guess, Andy, in my view, this is, we're doing it right from a planning perspective, from a plating perspective. From a procedural perspective, we're holding a public hearing. We don't have anybody providing testimony on it. I'm quite comfortable with it. It just seems unnecessary for us to delay this unless there are concerns. And I think if this board has concerns, great, but we're not going to delay this and go through the long form subdivision. If we don't do this, we're cutting a lot out per Mark's request and we're approving a short form subdivision that doesn't clean up the lots, so the county, the public loses in that sense. So to me, I guess that seems irresponsible.
I disagree, given the other people that I see in the room and the back who had to go through how many hearings to get their project approved, and they were held to the strictest of standards. So how many meetings did they go through before they were finally able to get their project approved? This is no different.
This, Andy, this is, this is very different than Honey Hills. I mean...
This is one area where we then disagree.
I guess I'm going to...
Call your vote.
Well, I don't have a vote. Don't have a motion.
Well, call your motion because I'm against it.
I'll make the motion then.
So remember, we have two motions.
Yeah, we have two motions. I'll go to the first motion first. I move to recommend approval of the variance request to use a short form process for the Stern 4 subdivision as proposed with creating only two new residential lots.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second? So as the chair, I can second the motion and I will second this motion. Any discussion?
So this is not the 33 feet, it's 40 feet yet?
This is just to approve the plat as it is.
Okay. Stand by.
Is everybody clear?
Yeah.
Okay. Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just, so that motion was just about the process?
Yeah.
It's not about the plat?
Yeah, just bringing the plat forward as it is. No, we haven't talked about the plat yet. I'll call the roll.
Okay, I will call the roll. Brown.
No.
Wald.
No.
Zachmyer.
No.
L.
No.
Tomac.
Yes.
Rohr.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Motion fails.
Fails, four to three.
Yeah, four to three.
Okay.
Do we go on a second motion then?
So I guess then I would suggest if you want to, you could either suggest one lot, and I guess maybe that'd be a conversation with the applicant's representative, which lot could be revised to just be a short form subdivision because I don't think that they will bring this back as a long form. It'll just be, it's left, we're not talking about right of ways, we're just talking about one residential lot.
Yeah, so yes, I'll give Mark the opportunity to clarify his requests on how we proceed with a short form.
So my, our request then would be to create two residential lots on this subdivision. And I can specify, it would exclude whatever lot that is. So we would exclude this lot and we would have this lot and this lot would be two residential lots. The other one would be non-exempt anyway because it's over 35 acres.
So Mark, it would be the plat as presented without lot one included?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yep. The boundary would go along the west and south line of lot one.
Thanks, Mark.
There's an existing access easement.
There's an existing access easement that we would have to use that goes through lot one presently, which is fine.
Right, because it's, it would be outside of the plat.
Ms. Chairman, so this goes, this whole lot one would be off this project?
So this is already a residential lot, so that would just, it would not be in this plat. And then this is just a really big exempt lot, so it also would not be in the plat. It would have to come as an outlot because it's, that quarter's currently divided in half. So they would combine that separately as a, an outlot in a separate plat. And then this would just stay the mess that it is.
Can you still throw it on that lot? It was like a little lot.
You would show neighboring, neighboring properties.
What I'm saying is they could still stay, stay a lot on the whole plat.
For reference.
Well, it's part of the lot because we just did it on the last lot. It would just be, you wouldn't be approving that, that's just shown on here instead of making another lot. It's a big lot.
Oh, this one?
Yes.
Yes, it could be shown.
Yes.
Yeah.
Part of the plat, it's just not a...
It's not included in the subdivision.
That's correct. It's not, it doesn't need approved, it's already exempt. It's more than 35 acres.
But you would have to do an outlot to combine those two because otherwise we're getting more than four in one quarter.
But this plat shows that, what I'm saying is it, it would show that on the whole plat as a lot. It's just, we could do that way.
So Natalie, you're saying because then we're over two lots, but do we have to include that if it's an outlot?
Okay, so, so basically, our policy is if you have already four buildable lots in one quarter, we generally are not going to approve anymore. There's no reason for the larger lots to be separated. They have no need for those to be separated. So they would, and I mean, this has a house on it, this has a house on it, this has a house on it. So you've got three and then you'd be making one more to make four in that quarter. But generally, if we were going to approve that, we would want this to be all one piece. I mean, they could go straight back. They could go straight back away and like divide it up again. I mean, anybody can. You know, if we have, let's say we have a quarter where we have four buildable lots, anybody could go in that quarter and divide two...
35 acres.
35 acres.
Yeah, that's the case always, right.
It's always the case.
Yeah.
Yep. It's just when we start out, we generally wouldn't approve another lot unless we only have four when we're approving it.
Right.
So.
Okay, so are we good then? It would be this same plat, just not cleaning up lot one, which is now excluded.
Right. It would be, this could be referenced just to show it. It wouldn't be part of the subdivision boundary. This could also be referenced to show it. And this would be, but this is the official subdivision.
Stern 4 subdivision is that.
Boundary, yep, two lots, exactly.
Mark?
But it would still be shown on the lot in the quarter that way. But it would still be shown on the plat in court that way?
I guess I don't know what you mean. Shown?
But the visual plat would still remain that, but your?
Yes, you can.
The other one exists as an exempt lot, it's just shown so it can be on that plat drawing.
It can be on here. I'm just saying the bold line for the subdivision is going to be around that. Yes. The rest of it can be shown, it's just.
Again, the simpler question, do we still need to do another part of our regular description for that outlot?
I guess that's a question for planning and zoning. Oh, I see, just to reference it and say, here's outlot, whatever.
Well, we just did it two approvals ago where we had three on lots of the short form subdivision and the other two were exempt.
Right.
And so it's just, what it does is it saves the reporting and it saves paper by just showing it on this draw.
Yep.
But the plat commission's not approving that.
Right. It's just referencing it.
It's the draw, yes.
Yeah. We've never done that before, but yeah, I don't know. We don't have a process for that. I think it makes sense. It's just I don't know if it can get recorded that way if it's an outlot.
Yeah, we're still not on the same page. So what I'm saying is?
You want it to be lot three.
Yes.
Right.
But then it becomes a long form subdivision because it's three lots, technically.
Even if they're egg lots, right?
Yeah. For being technical.
Mr. Chairman, I think this needs to go back to planning and zoning director and a proper long form subdivision being drawn up.
So, Mr. Chairman, I guess I would suggest this could be the first hearing of a long form subdivision since we're here and then it would come back next month as the second hearing for the long form subdivision. I mean, if that's how we're going to do it.
But then will the neighbors have proper notice?
I mean, they have been noticed that this was happening. It was online in this format with these number of lots. And I'd have to go back and look at the letter, but I think I did mention that there was a variance for process in that notice. So essentially, they're aware that four lots are being configured here. So it's just the name of it would be different, that would be the only thing.
So in lieu of that, I guess then I think this would simplify everything. If it's the wishes of the commission, we can revise this drawing to have just the two lots for that boundary. Along with that, we will submit an outlot plat for the remainder of it. So they would be recorded simultaneously, so then we won't have any residual parcels and then it would comply.
Yeah, I agree with that, Mark.
Mr. Chairman, quick question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Would all of that be ready then before the county commission meeting?
Yeah, I'll have it ready tomorrow.
And Natalie, implications of lot one, it's just messy, doesn't matter?
It'll just be messy, yeah.
So, Mr. Chairman, then what we're looking for then would be a motion to approve lot two, lot three, and lot four as presented?
Lots two and three only. Yeah. Under the, I don't know if we need to add a condition that a regular plat be submitted in conjunction with stern fourth? Does that make sense, Andy?
It does, but now it's getting to be more cloudy than what I'm comfortable writing myself.
Mark, what's the terminology that, with the irregular plat?
So, Mr. Chairman, it would just be approve a two lot short form subdivision and that an outlot has to be recorded alongside it for the remainder of the quarter.
An outlot for lot four?
An outlot for the remainder of the quarter, just say the remainder of the quarter.
So, looking at the motion that as you have written, we would modify it to say, I move to recommend approval of lots two and three of the final plat of the short form subdivision on a stern fourth subdivision and a zoning map amendment from agricultural to residential on lots two and three as the subdivision conforms to the regulations established in Article seven of the Morton County Land Use Code and conforms to the land use priorities established in the 2045 Comprehensive Plan with the condition that an outlot for the remainder of the quarter be recorded in conjunction with the plat.
Yes.
So moved.
So moved. Second.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Okay, Natalie. Item number?
Four. Our next item is the St. Anthony Commercial Park. This is in the northeast quarter of Section seven, township 136 North, range 81 West. This is St. Anthony right here. This is in pink, the outline of the proposed subdivision. The applicant is Rusty's Saloon and Grill LLC. So this is the preliminary plat of a long form subdivision. So you can see, most everything around here is agricultural. This is residential. This is typical of our former town sites, that it's all small lots, but still zoned agricultural for nonconforming ag. So we have lots one and two of block one, the rodeo grounds is in here. Then we have lots one and two of block two. They are looking to do, I mean, what I should say is, all of this, we're approving the zoning, anything, any use would be allowed in the zoning. The thought was a butcher shop here and then possibly gas station, convenience store type thing, maybe self-storage. So the request is for these to be zoned commercial and this one to be zoned industrial. This did go to the road commission and they said that once three of these lots get developed, they would like the developer to put in hard surface paving down to the turnaround. They would count the rodeo grounds as one lot, so essentially, once two of these three would start development to hard surface that road. And so that could be done as either developer agreement or covenants, that there'd be a no protest for special assessment. So staff is suggesting that we put together a developer agreement that would say as much. And if they, if the developer happens to own the lots at that time, then they would pay for it, otherwise it'd be the lot owners do that special assessment to hard surface. So again, this being the preliminary plat, they haven't done any kind of wetland analysis, but they identified this area as potentially falling under that category. There's no intention to build anything there, so to completely avoid wetland in the final plat, that could be designated as just purely a no build area. There would be a storm water management plan that would be submitted alongside final plat, that would be a future month. Missouri West Water did say that they can provide water for, if there were a butcher shop that would go in there, they could provide water for that facility. Morgan Sue said that they do have three-phase power available here as well. So with that, staff is recommending approval, preliminary approval of the preliminary plat with the suggestion, we put together a short developer agreement for the road and I can take any questions.
Questions for Natalie. All right, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak? Second call for the hearing.
Good evening, Commissioner and Chairman and Commission, and appreciate it, you being here tonight. I'm Randy Roan, I'm representing Rusty's Saloon and Grill. And we were contacted probably about a year ago in regards to a small processing, family-owned processing facility that wanted to be located near St. Anthony and support the local agricultural farmers, ranchers and that local needs on meat. This is, when we say slaughterhouse, that's in this brochure and out here, it's really scary. I'm thinking Texas Chainsaw Massacre or like a kill plant, and this is far from it. Even if we look at the definition of the facilities, of a minor or major facility, this would be what I would consider a micro, we're talking about 3,500 square foot. The Gaddas are a family-owned business, their three sons, between 20 and 30-year-old, are all family people, hardworking people, and they want to make St. Anthony their place where they're going to live forever and build this beautiful facility. And we are holding them to a higher design standard. We want this to be amazing, to fit the look of what we're trying to create in St. Anthony, which is a beautiful rustic community. Their hours of operation will be traditional banker hours, eight to five, Monday through Friday. They won't be, you know, processing every night. And most of these types of processing facilities have gone to box-type meets where they're not even putting an animal down and they're planning on probably doing, you know, 10 animals a week. And the need for this is, right now, any current facility that is not rancher-owned where they're putting all their priorities on their own cattle, this will be the only one where they'll be not into ranching, they're complete independent, so they don't give favoritism or priority to their specific own business. As far as all the setbacks and requirements of what this, we are far out of any required minimum setbacks from any adjoining properties or residential or anything, there's nice buffers. We made it so that way, we don't want to put pressure, we don't want to put any burden on the community itself, but we're holding them to a higher design standard, so we have a nice facility that you'd want to go there and take a picture in front with your family because it's, you know, higher standards, it's nice, it's old-fashioned kind of look is what they're going to, their architect gave us some renderings and it should be a great opportunity for this market. It'll create a lot of opportunity for ranchers and farmers in the wintertime, they don't have a whole lot going on where they can potentially, you know, pick up some, you know, part-time work and make, you know, sausage and all that. And it's all subject to Western Plains Public Health, USDA, state, federal guidelines, Department of Environmental Quality will be the final approvals of all their wastewater septic and their handling and their layout and design and it'll come to the highest standards and potentially, you know, they would like to become a USDA inspected facility, which would be one of the only ones in this region, which at that aspect, they can, you know, basically potentially sell Rusty's Saloon, you know, or Steaks too. So it'll be a good for, a nice fit for this community. Do you guys have any questions?
Any questions for Randy?
Randy, is there, what would be the location of the nearest type of facility around? Is there any more in North Dakota like this here?
Oh, as far as that USDA, there would be, you know, facilities in Bismarck that process federal and I think West Dakota meats. And I apologize, I'm not into, you know, that type of business model, but I've learned a lot just by listening to them, what they're saying and stuff like that. Most of these facilities in New Salem Center, they're, you know, they sound like they're, you know, rancher-owned and then they, you know, give priority on their own meats and, you know, it's, it'll be a nice deal for that area. To the south, the nearest one would be Carson. To the north, you know, you're probably, you know, in Bismarck, Manin, Butcher Block, et cetera. And then, you know, it'll be a nice area because this is heavily populated with farmers and ranchers, you know, from this area all the way to the South Dakota border, so it'd be, you know, a great deal.
So your operation would be somewhat similar to some of these that you're mentioning, correct?
Yes. So, and I'm just, and I apologize, I'm just talking about, you know, we were looking at doing a one parcel subdivision and Mark and Abe said, well, usually the county doesn't do that. So it's like, well, we wanted to get it set back enough from the county road to, for potential, you know, something that would need direct access and quick or convenience to the roadway that goes by St. Anthony. So we set it a little further back and we wanted a buffer for our wonderful neighbors and all that too, so it just makes sense in how it's positioned. And so we did a four-plot subdivision, a four-lot, and our goal was to, you know, create a buffer from our residential neighbor to the west. And then, of course, on the far northeast parcel, we'd want to have something that would maybe be of additional benefit to the community, you know, and for the last seven years, people have been talking gas station, but, you know, we'll see. I don't know if that's ever possible just because it's very rural and it's hard to support them kind of concepts in small communities. Even concepts in flasher and bigger communities suffer, you know, with gas stations. So it's, that is 100% questionable as far as convenience, maybe in 50 years, possibly, I just, I can't predict the future. But as far as next to our neighbor on the residential side, we'd want to have something more like a buffer that would not affect them whatsoever. And they do have a wonderful tree roll that already buffers them, but we were thinking maybe, you know, like a business condo or something a little nicer that doesn't have a lot of impact to that area, but mainly just for storage, but have some nice architectural feel to it. And then the far southwest parcel would be our rodeo grounds, that parcel would be, you know, we have no plans on it whatsoever because we're just kind of keeping that for, you know, events, you know. Right now, the only event we usually plan every year is one time a year, we have a rodeo for the community and, you know, a lot of the donations we give back to the church, the school, the rural fire department for that. And it's a nice community event and, you know, we just always try to be neighborly on whatever we're doing and create a lot of opportunity and increase the tax base in these areas. You guys got any other questions?
Any other questions for Randy? Thanks, Randy.
I got one thing, the only thing, you know, and I know we've been talking to try to match what Burley County's doing with their asphalt roads and this and that. At some point, you know, this could create undue hardships, especially At some point, you know, this could create undue hardships, especially on a four-unit subdivision. It's not like 200 units where you can sub, put a lot of that shared access entrances and, you know, where, you know, you got 80 lots or 40 lots all sharing pavement. On a four-unit subdivision, it'd be nearly impossible to do. I just, if that current laws don't exist in Morton County with forcing developers to make this, if it's not currently existing law to force us into asphalt, asphalting everything, I feel like I don't want to, as a developer, don't want to be held as a higher standard than the rules that currently exist. The pressure that this facility will create on that, on that road is no different than what already exists in this rural marketplace. It's all egg, rural, gravel, everything's connection point. It's, it's very minimal impact, you know, we're not, if this was near Mandan, where we'd have, you know, 1,000 a day traffic counts and all this other stuff, I could say, yeah, definitely we want to asphalt it, because it'll be, prevent a lot of headaches. But I think it's cost prohibitive in its current form with the four-unit subdivision. It just would be hard for the economics. It'd push an additional burden on this younger family that would be, you know, taking part of the specials and all that too, the St. Anthony custom meats, or St. Anthony meats. But anyways, that's, that's what it is, I guess.
Thanks, Randy.
Thank you so much.
Second-to-last call for the hearing. Final call?
Hi, I'm Shail Blend. I'm the resident right on the northwest closest to this subdivision. I just have a quick clarifying question, following on Randy's. If you're talking eventually putting asphalt in there, will that ever affect the surrounding property owner's specials or anything like that? Or will that be the responsibility of the subdivision? Any of those requirements?
So to answer that question, it would be just whoever's in that subdivision. It wouldn't go to the whole town.
Okay, last call for the hearing. I'll close the hearing. Natalie, can you touch on the hard-surfacing? I mean, just precedent, standards, thoughts on it?
Yeah, just that it went to the road commission, and that was their recommendation.
And do you have any context on that?
You mean like what we've done before?
Well, what we've done before, why they recommended it, I mean, have we recommended it in the past?
I think the fact that it's industrial and commercial, you know, I guess not knowing exactly what's going there.
Sure.
You know, if it's, if all that develops is just the meat facility, then they wouldn't meet that threshold that the road commission was suggesting, because their suggestion was once three of the lots start to be developed, then that would trigger the special to pave the road. So if it ever, if it only just sits there as the rodeo grounds and the butcher shop, then there wouldn't be a requirement to hard-surface it.
And is that typical of commercial developments in the county, or is this different because it's in St. Anthony?
We usually don't have developments like this.
Sure.
We don't usually have that much of a cluster of commercial and/or industrial together. And we are, so I know with subdivisions, we're kind of at that point where it's just getting to be too much with gravel. And so there's been a discussion at road commission about a subdivision hard-surfacing policy, and so I think that's kind of the background of how this is decision, you know, or recommendation is coming from the road commission. They have had discussions, and the product of those discussions was that we should move for all subdivisions to a hard-surfacing policy, which hasn't been enacted yet, but it's been discussed at the road commission. That it would be some kind of covenant for all the lots in the subdivision, that they're not going to protest out of specials, and that the county would determine when the point is that we should hard-surface and special assess, and that that threshold would be something like 75% of lots developed, so that you get, you know, your heavy truck traffic, you know, you don't want to hard-surface a road right in the beginning, because then you've got trucks coming in to build stuff, and then you destroy the road before it's even halfway full. So I think that's where that 75% threshold is coming from. And we will hopefully bring that to P&amp;Z soon as a land use code update, the paving policy.
And some of these paving policies are a little tough in the city of Mandan, like along the strip, you know, it's required, I looked at, to have your lots paved, used car lots, but you go out there, you see a lot of places that are used for commercial use that are not paved yet, because, well, quite frankly, for them to be rather astronomical to go in, you talk about hardship, you know, you just can't afford it.
Right. Because of parking requirements.
So, you know, so there's some dynamics here that's got to be considered.
For sure.
Just driving through the county, and lately I've been out there a lot, I can see the maintenance is getting tougher and tougher. We hear people in developments where the county, it's a full road, the county maintains the road in their development, and they're not happy that there's not a blade there once a month. They're not happy there's not enough gravel. This having traffic of trucks, trailers with cattle, and any butcher shop in North Dakota, if they sell anything decent from sausage to jerky, it's busy. So you have that constant traffic on that road, how often can the county get down there? You start getting washboards, it starts getting tough to maintain, cars have trouble getting through, we have rain, it turns to muck and mud. I kind of understand the hard-surface piece, and can see where the road commission would be going towards, you know, at three-quarters development, you probably should start looking as a development, even as our developments grow bigger, and we have five-acre lots and over a quarter section, you can only maintain so much, and even snow removal gets tough, because you're pushing gravel off into the ditches that needs to be brought back in the spring. At some point, you have to understand you no longer live in the country, and you've got to have a paved road.
And Mr. Chairman, another thing I consider is when you, you do make changes, there's such a thing as grandfathering in past projects too, so, you know, that's another point to look at.
That's going to be a huge, yeah, huge discussion.
Yeah, I agree with Dwayne. It seems like an odd policy, in a sense, to me, to adopt, because, I mean, you're going to develop three lots and then probably just not develop the fourth one, because it's going to cost you a fortune to pave the road. Isn't that the case? So, I mean, aren't we essentially just encouraging them to only develop?
It would be special assessed on everybody. It's just the special assessment would come
Sure.
Once three lots
Sure.
Start being developed.
Okay, so I guess, right, once you're selling, then it's different, but, I mean, right now being in their hands, right? Like, we're saying if they develop three, the road has to be paved, or if they develop four, but they can develop
No, three, it would be
Oh, three's the threshold, so they can develop two.
So once, basically, once development would start on the third
Sure.
Then that's when the specials would
And the county would come in and pave it, and then special it? Is that how that works?
That was the idea.
Okay.
But that there would be an agreement that they're not going to protest specials. They basically say, we, this is what we're signing up for, when we either get this subdivision approved, or when third party buys the lot.
And, okay, and so that would be transferred with the land
Right, it'd be like a covenant that would transfer.
And that's on an initial paving, or like, I'm just actually curious how that, how that works, like, future?
You mean for future maintenance?
Chip seal, road, I mean, is it?
That's why we haven't brought the policy forward yet, because all those details have to be worked out in the grandfathering that Dennis is talking about. That was the initial, and there was quite a bit of discussion to even arrive there at that approach. There's pros and cons to different ways of doing it. So, yeah, it's, there's a lot of detail that, yeah, needs to get worked out.
So that needs to get worked out, and that will be worked out when this is that
So, no, no, not that policy. That's a whole separate policy, but you were asking for some
Yeah, yeah, no, that makes sense.
And I think, I think that that was the thought process in here, was kind of that 75% threshold, because that was, I think, front of mind, given the discussions that had been happening about a general subdivision paving policy.
But here, we're saying 50% threshold. Am I tracking?
Seventy-five. So there's four lots, so when three of the four would begin to be developed
But you can develop 50% without crossing the threshold
Yes.
And this one, so it's, it's the nature of four lots, when we hit 75?
Yeah. But they were saying they thought the rodeo ground should count as one, so you've already got one of those three.
Mr. Chairman, I understand where road committee's coming from. We don't have an ordinance, we don't have a rule, we don't have anything to force this paving. This can go into a future discussion on paving and subdivisions, but right now, we don't have a rule to enforce this. I also am not comfortable that somebody could come up with a subdivision, and, well, you know, as soon as you sell three-quarters of the lots, then other ones have to automatically pave it, and then they can't protest it?
Yeah, that's what I don't, I don't like that.
That, I think there's enough state law and special assessments, they would have a right to protest it anyway. That to try to limit public protest on a special assessment, that's going to get a whole room full of angry people, and probably a whole legislature full of angry people too.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with you, Annie, on that. I think that's one area that's a little dictatorial.
Yeah, I'm not really feeling the love on that one.
No, the protesting part, I think, is, I don't think we could push that. We could say that once they've met three-quarters, they will go into an agreement with Morton County, with the land, or with the road commission, but they'd still have the right to protest. I mean, there's streets in Bismarck down off Morrison that are paved, because the owners there said, "I'll deal with the bumps and bumps, I don't need it paved."
Yeah, I've driven them.
Right. There's spots here in Mandan that were contested for road improvement, and those businesses said, "No, we don't need the road improved," and they're not improved. So I think they would still be allowed to contest it.
Well, I think that's a citizen right.
But I think at three-quarters, it should be considered, and, you know, be looked at. If you, if your third lot is a city park, well, are you gaining any more traffic than what those two lots brought? I don't know, but...
All right, I'll let Randy give us one minute.
I apologize for being so long-winded. Here's my overall thoughts as a developer. I guess you've got to use data to make decisions. We do live in North Dakota, not Minneapolis, Minnesota, where every major roadway, and you've got 5 million population to handle these mass roadways and the resurfacing, the chip seal, which happens, useful life on something that's impacted by semis and heavy equipment with frost heaving and all this stuff, could be, every five years, you're replacing that versus running a grader about it. But I don't know what the cost of grading a road is, what the cost of milling, chip sealing, and annual maintenance on it. A lot of our properties that we do in Mandan, inside the city, we do concrete, because we know it lasts five times longer, and we've proven that in every one we do it, we don't do no maintenance, and it holds up forever. It's wonderful, and, you know, I'm 100% Morton County, I put all my eggs in one basket, I put it all in this county, and I like to develop on this side of the river. One thing we want to always have as a county, we want to have basically a competitive advantage over Burleigh County or other counties to make it a great county for people to come in, grow their families, grow their businesses. And if we put too much additional cost on the developers, what happens is, we talk about affordable housing all the time, you hear it all the time, affordable this, affordable that, it all starts with the basic piece of dirt under that structure, whether it's business or house. You start putting this on, this on, special this, special that, tax this, property tax, and pretty soon, it's cost prohibitive. Then people leave, they go elsewhere, or they go to Burleigh County. One thing is, you know, on a development we're looking at doing out by Lincoln here this last year, we tabled it just because they wanted us the hard-surfacing, surface requirements. So you guys would probably have to figure out that cost ratio of blading, grading, and asphalt chip sealing and the maintenance on this kind of roadway. So, sorry I took more than a minute. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Randy. Hey, other thoughts from the board? And I guess Natalie, keep in mind, this is preliminary, right?
Correct.
So we'll see this again.
Yep, next month, or whenever they're ready for the final plat.
Ready for motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd be ready for it to do it. Mr. Chairman, move to recommend approval of the preliminary plot of the long-form subdivision known as St. Anthony Commercial Park, and a zoning map amendment from agricultural to commercial on lots one and two, block one and lot one, block two, and from agricultural to industrial on lot two, block two, as the subdivision conforms to the regulations established in Article 7 of the Morton County Land Use Code, and will create opportunity for the development of local businesses. No condition.
Motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries.
Our next item and last item are some land use code updates. The discussion about housing near the landfill prompted the idea that maybe we should have some standards for how close residences can be constructed to high-intensity land uses. So I have in your packet, just a very simple extra bullet, in the residential district zoning, like the zoning district definitions. Seemed like a good place to put it. So just setback from high-impact land uses. It could be 500 feet, it could be 1,000 feet, this is just the beginning of a discussion. And I call it high-intensity, or high-impact use, that can just be solid waste facility, or we could come up with a definition of what high-impact use means, and if we want to group together certain categories of uses, this is just the beginning of a discussion.
Chairman, now, so the areas in yellow here are the areas that are additionals?
Those are changes. But the slaughterhouse, we'll talk about that next, I'm just talking about the more simple one first. Yeah, that was suggested at a previous Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, that we have that in our ordinance, so that's why I'm bringing it forward for consideration, just the beginning of a discussion. And if you change your mind, and you don't think it should be in there, we can forget about it.
Sorry, right now, you only want to look at the
Just point E under Section 2-050. Just that part.
Just that focus there.
Just for, just for now. And then, I didn't separate them on the paper, to save a piece of paper. They're not part of the same discussion.
Mr. Chairman, a question for Natalie, under the high-impact use. Where will that rule fall into carbon capture and crypto mining?
So I called it high-impact use, but it says specifically solid waste facility, and I just called it high-impact use, because I thought in the course of a discussion, we might wish And I, I just called it high-impact use because I thought, in the course of a discussion, we might wish to add other uses. But if we're just concerned about solid waste for now, we can just call it setback from solid waste facility, and say five hundred feet, or whatever distance seems reasonable. This would be, um, you know, when you say it has to be setback from, that's implying a new structure. You know, like if you're gonna build a new home, um, it can't go to the nuisance. So, but that could be spelled out more clearly and just say, any structure, new structure, or something. New, uh, structure to be constructed, or to be permitted.
Natalie, do we have a similar, um, ordinance for where to place these high-impact uses, or landfills in this case?
So that's always at our discretion. Um, so I think, I'd have to look back at the land use code. I think they're either only in industrial or special use under ag, like most of our high-impact land uses. Um, and so when it comes forward for consideration, um, we have to decide if it's in the correct location, and that's at the board's discretion, or the county's discretion. Um, this is kind of a little bit different. Instead of saying, when you place a solid use facility, or solid waste facility, it must be setback from houses this far. I believe the state has its own, um, you know, because you have to permit those through the state. Um, they would have their own, and I'm guessing it's probably five hundred feet or a thousand feet. But more so just that, let's say, a landowner wants to move toward the nuisance, because they don't care, um, and they want to be two hundred feet from a landfill. Um, right now, they can do that, we don't have any prohibition against that. So this was just brought up in the discussion, since we were talking about the landfill and discovered that we have no minimum for a setback of a residence from a landfill. That's why we're bringing this forward.
I guess I would move against putting this on human habitation or, or residential structures, simply because if you buy a piece of land next to the landfill, and you decide you want to live a hundred feet from the landfill, does personal property rights prevent you from doing that? Versus telling somebody who lives in a house and a landfill's moving in, I think we would be better regulating industry than we would residential. Does that make sense? And the fact that if, if you buy a piece of property next to a noisy facility, and you know it's noisy, and you decide to build a house there, is it our job to tell you not to do it, knowing what's there? I think putting the warnings, like we discussed, saying, "Okay, you know you're doing this," something there that says you can't sell this property online to an unknowing person, but still allowing them to do what they want to do with the piece of land that they bought.
Yeah, and Natalie, go ahead.
I do agree with that also, because five hundred feet is a hundred and sixty yards.
I just want everyone to know.
That's basically across the road.
This was not staff's suggestion. I'm, I'm bringing it because it was the board talking about it at a previous meeting.
But I do, I, I do agree, that's not far enough. And we just, our first, um, agenda item, they were talking about the amount of junk that was coming across the road. So if, uh, if someone's been living there for thirty years, and they build a solid waste facility, well, what do you do, move? Five hundred feet's not enough.
So I guess that's not, so in this, we're not talking about placement of a new solid waste facility? Because that's a different question. In this, we're just talking about new homes, and whether they can or cannot move toward a nuisance. That's how this is written. If we were gonna get into spacing from, in terms of citing new high-impact land uses, that's a whole separate discussion, that we're, we're dealing with them one at a time. Right now, we're dealing with DAC facilities.
So, and then, oh, go ahead, Dennis.
Chairman, I agree, you know, that we have to differentiate between going, we have, I'll, I'll use a good example, our wastewater treatment plant in Mandan. You know, that was all by itself, and then, then, of course, you had Dublin, of course, then, then people complained about the smell. Well, they moved in, knowing you're right next to the poop plant, so to speak.
Right.
And, you know, what do you expect? Uh, so most people are, are obviously aware of, this is a landfill, this is this kind of, uh, whatever have you, that could be somewhat detrimental. And again, you know, the, the landfill that we have out there, I think in recent meetings, I think they had roughly another twenty, twenty-five-year life yet, possibly?
Till 2060.
Yeah, I think so. And then, then, of course, you know, you'd have to look at it, either at ascertaining more land around there, whatever have you. But, uh, putting in these landfills and things like that compared to put them in, you know, thirty, forty, fifty years ago is different, because of the EPA, and there's so many more regulations, so many other hoops and hurdles you gotta go through, that try to protect other people, too, that maybe were not in place way back when.
That's true.
I guess one other thing I would ask is, is this a, is this a planning and zoning issue? Because do we issue the building permits? Do you know what I mean?
The county issues building.
Right, the county issues the permits, but planning and zoning has no bearing on, other than saying, okay, that can be a residential lot.
I see what you're saying.
Well, if we zone it residential, now why do we have to put in here to tell them that you have to stay five hundred feet away? You can zone, you can buy, like he said, right next to the wastewater treatment plant. And if, if we zoned it residential, well, then it's up to that person to realize that, well, maybe we should stay a little further back on this one, versus planning and zoning saying, no, you can't have residential there now, because you live next to industrial. And we, we would run into that issue in St. Anthony, if for any reason that meat plant decides to expand or gets bigger, and becomes a high-impact, did we just stop any growth in St. Anthony of residential? Because we said five hundred feet, now you can't zone it. That's, you know, is this truly a zoning thing, or would this be a permitting issue?
So counties, cities, townships can have standards for setbacks from different things. Yes, this would be something that would have to get enforced at the building permit level, but we do also have a section in the code that deals with building permits, and it's in the land use code. So if we want to regulate this, it can be in the land use code, and it can still be something that's applied at the building permit level.
Okay.
And again, if nobody likes this idea, I wasn't bringing this forward from staff's recommendation. It sounded like something the board wanted to see. So if you don't want to see it, we can just move along.
Chairman, Natalie, wouldn't this be a rarity in terms of a, an issue?
Uh, you mean for us to set this standard?
I mean, for, yeah, I mean, to where it becomes an issue, uh...
There is a commission...
That we need to have this, you know, are, are we addressing something that is pretty rare in occurrence or needed?
So I guess I don't have a basis to know. Um, it was mentioned at a previous planning and zoning commission meeting, that it's pretty standard to have like a five-hundred-foot setback. I guess I didn't know that to be true, but someone had mentioned it, so that's why I brought it forward.
Consensus of the board not to take action?
Well, this is scheduled for a public hearing, too, isn't it?
Correct.
Oh.
For today?
It just has to be a public hearing if...
But are we going through all of these, or, I mean, how, how do we want to do this?
So, there was one, uh, you can do it however you want to do it. We could do them, like, if you don't want to talk about this topic, we can go through Slaughterhouse, and then you could say, does anybody want to talk about either of them in one, since they're all land use code updates?
So I think we should give you guidance, like we've done before, on each item as we go through it.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful.
Yes, I think it'd be good to have consensus from the board on our, our thoughts on E, and then we can move on to Slaughterhouse.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Chairman, my thoughts on E. Uh, if it's gonna be from a landfill, it should be labeled as landfill. Setback from a high-impact use, that's, uh, gonna, I think it creeps into the carbon capture, wind turbines, power plants, refineries, you name it. That's, that's, uh, we probably need to go by what is the actual use. I mean, it even could be feedlots, even though we have a feedlot ordinance. I'm all right with a five-hundred-foot from a landfill, because even though they see it, that doesn't mean they don't ask for abatements on their property taxes. And, well, you, didn't you see that when you moved there? Well, yeah, but, and, well, then it's the yeah, but. So I'm all right with five hundred feet, but that's, you know, I'm open-minded to whatever the board would say. And then, oh, that would be, guess my statement on letter E.
So, Andy, keep, keeping the language renaming it, essentially.
Yeah, uh, by use. Setback from a high-impact use, that, it, it, I think it should be by what the use is, but, because if it's just by high-impact use, we're gonna have to define it anyway.
So this would just be a setback from a solid waste facility?
Right.
Or landfill, whatever they want to call it.
We call it solid waste facility in the code, so just to keep that consistent, um, reference would probably make sense.
Because the other one is, as far as carbon capture, I don't know where the subcommittee is on that.
Getting close.
Maria's smiling, she's just enjoying that assignment. But it's the, and that's all, it's been on the news. Carbon capture, what's going on in South Dakota, that just is not gonna go away. So, but what is what's gonna be considered a high-impact use?
Again, Mr. Chairman, the only reason I used that phrase was if we wanted to add things to the list. I would completely agree with Commissioner Zach Meyer, that if we are just interested in setting back from solid waste facility, it should just be called setback from solid waste facility.
Yeah, and Natalie, maybe you organize E just to be setbacks with subbullets, and the first one is solid waste facilities.
That makes sense.
Consensus from the board on that?
Chair, I do have one thing to point out. So the Shook subdivision that we just, uh, approved, if you set back five hundred feet, that gives very little buildable room on those two lots, just because of the terrain. So.
Yeah, Natalie...
Just wanted to point that out.
Well, I, I get it.
So there is the entitlement issue, and I guess this wouldn't be the only thing that kind of steps into that. But, um, I mean, the other approach would be to make, rather than, um, structures to regulate resi, new residential lots, right? At least the issue, when it got brought up at the last meeting, when it was, it was a residential lot.
Well, and the county has the ability to review all the details of a proposal and say if it's in the correct place or not. And so, at the board's discretion, can say, no, that's not the correct location for, and then we even have it in our long-range plan, that it's not supposed to have residential lots there. Um, it's supposed to remain ag, so that's a basis to say, we don't want that lot there. So we already have that ability, I don't think we have to, um, put that in a code. That's more so, um, future land use map, um, territory in terms of approving resident, new residential lots. Um, this would be for just a structure.
So I think to Maria's point, I'm maybe a little uncomfortable that we haven't discussed this until an application came forward with full entitlement. And then we thought, well, maybe this isn't great, so we approve it. And then at the same meeting, we adopt a policy that prohibits most of their development. So, I mean, for those reasons, unless we're making an exception, I'm uncomfortable with it.
And they already, so let's look at it in the sense that they already had a lot there, that already had an entitlement for a home. Um, and so it's a similar situation, that most of that land would also, if this were to pass, you know, they wouldn't be able to put a home in much of that area. That entitlement already existed. Um, and again, those lots, they don't need permission from the county to make that separation, they already can do that. So I guess I would say, yes, this came up because we were looking at it. Um, but I guess I, I don't think, um, we're doing much different than, you know, if, if, I guess what I'd say is, those two lots are not changing much. Um, and yes, this was brought up because of that whole discussion, but they could have done that anyway, whether this passed or didn't pass, or we had a discussion or not.
Right, but if we passed this, we would impact those lots.
Right, we can't pass this, I mean, this would still need another hearing as well.
Right, but they're not gonna build a house next week, right?
Sure. Yeah, and like I say, I'm not, I'm not bringing this forward.
No, I, I agree with you. We, I remember, I mean, it was, there was commentary from the board.
It seemed like there was commentary from the board that, oh my goodness, we need to address this shortfall. So I, I brought it forward, but if we're uncomfortable with it, we can just...
Could I make one more suggestion, maybe? Maybe in, maybe instead of, you know, calling out a specific distance, um, make it a little bit more, I don't know, generic is the word I want to use, um, to make people aware that logical setbacks from things like landfills and carbon capture facilities
I, I think...
Would be a good idea.
I mean, and nobody reads the land use code, I don't think, because, I mean, we have a warning in there about, when you move out to the country, here's certain things you need to be aware of.
So, and...
I mean, no different than Detis's point of buyer beware, you're moving into wastewater treatment plant facilities.
But Natalie, are we getting too far, like, the, the original concern was that we didn't want the county to be responsible for, or the city for dealing with their impacts of being adjacent to the landfill. That was the initial concern, right, was the...
I'm not, I, I don't know what the concern was in terms of the...
Other people were in the room, is that, am I...
That was the biggest thing, is that, you know, building a house there, you know you're gonna have garbage in your yard, you know, we heard Leonard speak tonight on the issues with that lot. You know that, don't come to the city complaining that you have that mess now that you're there. The other issue that came up was water and other things. If there's any seepage or anything that happens later down the road, you knew when you built there, that was a potential. You can't come back to the city and make them buy your house, because now you can't drill a well. That was, that was the main concern. And I understand this would kind of somewhat address that, but at the same time, as we heard last time, hey, if I want to build a house, you're telling me I bought this lot and can't build a house? Well, who are you to tell me that? Which is, again, now, if they had a house sitting there, and the landfill wanted to buy the lot across the road, obviously, we would say, no, you can't put a land, you can't put a landfill there, there's already houses there. But when something is already there, and you know what you're getting into, that, that's the piece that kind of stinks. Because what are you gonna do? I mean, I thought it was a good idea to build next to the railroad tracks, and now every time the train comes, my house shakes. You know, I mean, that's just the reality of where you build, so...
Well, Mr. Chairman, after, after hearing this here, I, I'd rather, my personal thing is, I think it should be excluded. I think we're not gaining anything at this point in time, and we can debate this here back and forth for quite some time. And it's, it's, I just don't think it's needed. That's my personal opinion.
Okay. We might need to hold up, like, right hand, left hand here.
We're just making recommendations, right?
Yeah, uh, I mean...
This is purely just brought forward, you don't have to do anything with it. You can just say, let's move on, and we're not interested.
Yeah, let's move on. It, it is a hearing as well, so let's, let's move through more of these.
Yep.
Hopefully quicker than...
And there's only the one, it's, it's just Slaughterhouse after that. Um, so in our, there was quite a housekeeping list of land use code updates that we just recently passed, um, a couple months ago. And a Slaughterhouse update was in there. Once that reached county commission, um, there was some discomfort with it, uh, so it was sent back to planning and zoning. And we've made some more revisions. Um, I consulted with, uh, Department of Environmental Quality at the state level, to see if they had standards for how far a slaughterhouse has to be from a water body. They do not. Um, as far as septic is concerned, there is so much variation in soil types, terrain, the slope, everything having to do with septic systems. So it really is a case-by-case basis. Um, and after talking with Custer, or Western Plains Public Health Staff, um... And after talking with Custer, or Western Plains Public Health Staff, it seemed to make sense that we preserve that special use permitting process for slaughterhouses. As we have it right now, it is a special use, by special use only, so I think it makes sense to preserve that process so that we can support the health district in applying recommendations for best practices for septic on a case-by-case and site-by-site basis. So, that is the changes that are in here. Other than that, it didn't change a whole lot. If you want me to go through it, I can, all the provisions, or you can just look at it and let me know if you have questions.
Natalie, why is construction season defined under slaughterhouse?
So, basically, the idea, and that has to do with septic, so...
That's, I mean, that's, that's good enough. Not that worried about it.
It was for...
It's a septic, that's fine.
It was so that if the septic system needs to be upgraded based on actual water usage after one year of use, because you're projecting, all you're doing is estimating how much water you think you're going to use. Western Plains, their recommendation was, when you have a facility like that, to require that they put flow meters on the water so that you know, and then you, after a year, you reassess and say, "Okay, how much water did you actually use that went through the system, and how does that compare to the size of a system we projected and the volume of water we thought you would use?" So, then if there's a huge variation, maybe they need to upgrade the septic system and to give them a full construction season to accomplish that.
Okay, yeah, I see it in context, and that makes sense.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Natalie, I do have one thing, just reading into the septic system part of it. It both, bullet point one and two B reference the health district. At some level, it's not gonna be in the health district's hands, it's going to jump up to the DEQ's hands, so I don't know if there's some different wording that we need to use there or something.
So, which, which part would jump up to DEQ?
Under H1 and 2B, it references local health district in two spots, so does local health district also include the DEQ if it jumps up to that level?
Right, we could put permitting agency, you know, relevant permitting agency, so...
Something more generic.
Right, and Western Plains, I know I had referenced, you had mentioned that about potentially DEQ having jurisdiction over certain septic systems, and Western Plains said, by and large, they all, they all go back to the local health district, there's hardly anything that DEQ does.
Okay.
Twenty-five users or more is where it goes to DEQ, but the health district is still involved.
Yeah, I had one recently that I did out in Sterling, so...
Yeah, and I guess she was saying that very often, they kick that back to the local 'cause it's just, they're really only dealing with the big, big...
Yeah, that one, the DEQ was, there was nobody to take it, so the DEQ took it, so...
Yeah, but yes, that's a good point, the appropriate health permitting agency, I guess.
Just in case it would ever get to that level.
Yes, yep. Good call.
Okay, any other comments, questions for Natalie? Good, Natalie, have I opened the hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, I will open the hearing. First call. Second call for the hearing. Just if you don't mind coming up to the mic, just as it gets recorded.
I'm Brad Tocash. I just have one question as far as every slaughter plant that you do would be a special hearing like this? Is that correct?
Right now, that's the requirement, and it would be the same, given how this is recorded.
Because like, you know, I guess I live in St. Anthony area, and I'm not worried about the one down there, it's more general if you set this precedent as the county establishment, and you only got a 50-foot setback from somebody's boundary. You know, I believe in property rights and the people that are there, you know, if you put it in the precedent that, oh, yeah, you can put one 50 feet, I guess that would be my question and problem with it, is all.
Yeah, thanks, Brad.
Yeah, so to answer that question on the recording, so right now, all slaughterhouse facilities have to be permitted through a special use process where there'd be a public hearing and notices get sent. So, this would add some detail in the code, but it wouldn't change that requirement, at least based on how this is written. People would still have to go through, if you wanted to start a new slaughterhouse facility, it would have to go through a special use permitting process. I think the difference would be, I think it is only allowable in industrial zone right now, and the suggestion would be that it could be in industrial or ag, but also still through a special use process.
Natalie, it's interesting to me that the slaughterhouse definition is based on facility size and not number of animals processed.
Mm-hmm, and we can change that if you prefer...
It's sort of being nitpicky, but like, depending what you consider, structure and holding areas, like, it sort of seems like if you slaughtered a deer on a ranch, it could be considered a minor slaughterhouse, right? I mean, just solely by this, but no, I mean, I'm not worried about that, it's just interesting to me.
Yeah, the difference, I guess the difference would be it's for commercial sale as opposed to personal.
Right, but that, this doesn't say that, does it? Just says raised off-site, slaughtered, and processed.
Yeah.
I don't think it's, I'm just, I guess while we're vetting this, maybe something to put a little thought into?
Yeah, for commercial sale, I guess, yeah. Yeah, you get into a gray area because you might have a facility where, I mean, people have big families around here, maybe you've got an actual commercial setup, and you don't sell to anybody, you just process. I mean, it could be very large. Yeah, that's a good, good point.
Well, as I say, as you get into the additional standards for major and minor, well, if you have a small building, there's nothing stopping you from holding, I know it says 12 hours is the length of time, but there's nothing stopping from a feeding operation happening for somewhere out there, just because it was a small building. I know they're still supposed to, when it comes to the minor slaughterhouse versus major, 400 feet versus 1,000 feet on where you're keeping the animals for feeding, so if you build a small building and decide to fatten cows, I guess that's okay according to this, so something to differentiate size, yeah.
So, you're saying number of animal, you think there should be like a number of animals processed type thing?
I don't know if it's not, yeah, if it's a number of animals processed, or, I honestly don't know how you'd word it. I'd be happy to work with you on it, but yeah, it's something, something different to differentiate just in square feet of a building. A question, Mr. Chairman, would be is, these new standards, how would they affect M&amp;W right now? If M&amp;W was coming forward and wanting to build this exact same facility that they have right now, would these regulations stop their facility or be an undue hindrance?
I'm sorry, I don't know that one, where...
M&amp;W is south of 1806 by, kind of by the post area.
So, that's in Mandan's?
It's...
Kind of along the trolley tracks.
Right, but I believe it's the county jurisdiction once you get down that far.
No, I don't think so. It's in Mandan's ETA.
Is it in the ETA?
It is, yeah. I mean, it's right close to the threshold.
Because Mandan, the Mandan ETA goes all the way out to kind of that hill, down the road from the post and then up the hill, in that subdivision, so halfway up the hill.
And I worked at Missouri Valley Meats when that was still a thing. That pen wasn't overly big, and those animals, they had plenty of water to drink, they never fed them, that I'm aware of, and they were usually slaughtered within two days. I mean, they made them comfortable, they put straw and stuff down in the winter, but I don't believe they ever had to feed them, and it just seemed to me, the time when I was out there, they would, they'd be slaughtered within two days and a new set came in.
Well, you don't want to feed them right before you start them.
I mean, I, I...
It's pretty gross.
Somebody said feeding, I mean...
Yeah, yeah. Well, and I don't think 12 hours is quite enough either, because like, just an example with Schweitzer's, we take our beef there, well, it's usually 2:00 in the afternoon, well, they get butchered the next morning, well, that's a little bit more than 12 hours, you know? And they get their water, whatever, but, you know, depending on the size of the facility, it's, it might be more than 12 hours, so what happens then?
And we did, we approved that one slaughterhouse in New Salem, or was that in...
That's New Salem's, that's their jurisdiction.
So, then when we approved their financing?
Yes, probably. Yeah, I think that got a community development grant, yep.
But that, I would not wanna see the restrictions so tight that it would, if somebody wanted to do the exact same thing M&amp;W Meats is doing right now, that these rules would suddenly prohibit it.
Right, so the New Salem one is kind of what I used as a model, and that one, I believe, was something like 8,000 square feet, 6,000, 8,000, something like that, and the nearest houses are 350 feet away, and you can't even tell it's there.
Yeah, the, everything looked well-planned and engineered on that facility.
Yes, yep. And most of the time, they are gonna be that way. I mean, basically, we don't have to pass any of this, we just have literally no detail whatsoever in the code. We don't even have, we just say special use permit process with no standards at all. So, when this comes forward, we would just review it as a special use permit, and so the one in St. Anthony, I mean, we would just review it with no standards if we don't have anything on the books. And in, in looking at other jurisdictions, you know, it's very similar, there's no detail hardly at all in anybody else's codes either for slaughterhouse. The most detail was in, I think it was Stutzman, and they just said you have to be a half-mile from a stream. That's their standard in their code, and that's why I asked DEQ, and they have no standards for distance from water bodies, so we just, we don't have any standards in our code right now.
Natalie, I'm gonna keep just belaboring this, but, so can you, I'm just trying to differentiate here, like, minor slaughterhouse from like a butcher shop where they are...
It's killing versus processing.
So, but we have this, this is slaughtered or processed, right? So, does it apply to just processing? Under minor slaughterhouse?
Definition?
Yeah, definition, where animals raised off-site are slaughtered and/or processed.
Mm-hmm.
So, we mean slaughtered.
Well, it could also be meat, yeah, it could be meat processing, right? Where it's just you bring meat in and you process it, so it'd be the same process for, of approval for processing or killing and processing.
Okay, and increased setbacks and offloading facility or...
Yeah, and I mean, that's how it's defined in most codes, is slaughtering or processing, or rendering of byproducts. If we wanted to separate them out, we could. And say butcher shop versus slaughterhouse.
We're getting into the weeds, but it's important.
Mr. Chairman, Palm, I have, I don't know crap about slaughterhouses, and here, let's look at where I'm asked, being asked to look and come up with regulations and issues and specifications for slaughterhouses, which I know nothing about.
I agree.
Now, I mean, that's what makes it difficult. Now, if I wanna take this here and go back and go on internet, Google, and artificial intelligence and get all kinds of information, then I could be informed.
Well, and I will...
I don't find that I'm informed to say, "Hey, oh, this is great, this is good or this is bad," I don't know.
And I mean, I, I have looked, and there's, there's really not that much out there about it, and I guess, I think, if we, I don't think it's gonna be useful to go through with a fine-tooth comb and try to cover every single thing you could possibly think about. I really don't think that's useful. I think if we're only looking at the impacts that we are generally concerned about, which is either noise, smells for neighboring properties, so a setback, and impacts for septic, and availability of utilities, that kind of thing, that's what we tend to look at. I think to get down to finer detail doesn't serve what we're trying to accomplish, that would just be my thought. And I think, basically, the reason I put it to 15,000 square feet, I originally had it at 10, you know, so it's sized very much like existing facilities, you know, that serve our community, but then, you know, if somebody wanted to expand, I thought it made sense not to limit to 10 and then push them into some other category, you know? I think the local slaughterhouse is gonna do fine, probably, at that size threshold, but, you know, if you wanna, because as far as number of animals, I mean, this type of facility, they're not keeping those animals on site for any real length of time. You drop, like, like Becky said, you drop them off in the afternoon, they're gonna be slaughtered the next day. Doesn't, it's not useful to keep animals around any longer than that, so you're gonna be kind of limited to your capacity, you know, in, in that sense. But if you're looking at like CAFO, you know, concentrated animal feeding operation, we don't get into a more stringent regulation until you get to 1,000 head or greater, so if we're talking about head slaughtered in a week or a whatever, you know, you're not really getting there, I think, unless you're, you're in really big numbers. So, I think you're gonna be actually limited by the number of staff who are able to work there. You're not gonna get into those big numbers because there just aren't even enough people to operate the facility in a practical sense.
So, I think it should be clarified to separate out slaughter, true slaughterhouses from like butcher shops. I mean, I'm thinking every butcher shop that I can think of, I mean...
So, we just say cross out the "or," so slaughtered and processed?
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
Board agree?
Then it's a different use, and then I guess we'll come up with that one when we get there.
Are we still in public hearing?
Yeah, we are still in public hearing. Good thing we're still in public hearing.
I guess, I probably didn't explain it right the first time, but when it, when I read through it, it gets so confusing, and I know a lot about different slaughterplants, like the one in New Salem, everything's indoors, you unload the animal, it goes indoors, nobody sees what's going on. M&amp;W, to my knowledge, they don't kill them there. West Dakota Meats, they'll come out to your farm and process them there, you know, half them and everything, and take them back in. It just seems like when I read through it, it, it does get into the weeds, and I can see where Dennis is confused because it confused me, and that's why I wanted to kind of listen to what was actually said, and, yeah, as I sit there, I get more confused because, you know, if it's a special use permit, yeah, then every time somebody comes in, you deal with it at that point. That, I don't know, I don't see any real gain by putting all this in the books if it doesn't, you have to come, come, every person has to come through this anyway. Guess that's just my thought. Thanks.
Thanks, yeah. Okay, so second to last call for the hearing. Final call for the hearing, and I'll close the hearing. Okay, so Natalie, from us, you'd just be looking for recommendations?
And we don't, we don't have to adopt any of it either, also, I mean...
But even, is it two, do we need two hearings, or do we send it to the commission?
We should, we, when we do land use code... We should, um, we, when we do land use code updates, we always have two hearings.
So we would be adopting?
But if you don't want to, I mean, if we don't want to add it or proceed with it, then we can just say we're not interested and just not have another hearing also. It's just, most, um, most uses have some kind of standards, um, so that we're not trying to understand what a use is when we're reviewing it and become arbitrary in our determinations. Um, we certainly can put conditions on uses and say, here's what's appropriate for this area, um, anytime we have a special use process. Um, it's just, we may struggle when we get to an application if we also don't know anything about slaughterhouses or what kind of setbacks they require. Um, so it's good to have some, I, in my opinion, I think it's good for any use to have some kind of standards in the code, like a basis for why you setback.
Okay, Chairman, Natalie, I have a question regarding these, these standard codes. Are they recommendations, or are they steadfast, steadfast rules? In other words, you violated this particular section here, so you can't do this, or you'll be penalized, or are they more toward recommendations, and we look at them and see whether they fit into the big picture? Where, how do these fit into that?
So, usually when you have standards in the land use code, those are standards that you need to meet. So let's say that, I, I mean, let's just, for sake of illustration, let's say that this got adopted exactly as it is. So then, if someone applied and said, I want a special use permit to, uh, open a slaughterhouse, and I'm in the minor category, then my facility needs to meet these setbacks that are in here. 400 feet from an occupied residence, and property boundary, minimum 50 feet, um, from a property boundary for all the components of the slaughterhouse. So that is what they need to meet. Those would be the standards. I mean, aside from, um, standards, you know, install flow meters on the water...
Right, yeah.
That kind of thing. Um, it's not a suggestion. When it's in the land use code, it's a standard.
It's, it's a requirement.
But again, right, it's a requirement. Again, there's always variances for requesting that things be different, um, but it's, it's supposed to be a standard.
See, I just want to make sure it's versus whether it's an optional thing or whether it's actually a requirement.
Right.
Whether it's, okay, that just clarifies that, that's all.
Because right now, you know, um, if we, in, I guess, if we don't have standards, then just our typical, um, building setbacks would apply. Um, so if you're on an industrial lot, it'd be 25 feet from a rear yard, 15 feet from your sides, and 25 from the front. If it's on a ag property, it's 60 from the front, 50 from the rear, and 15 on the sides. So you'd be 15 feet from your neighbor, potentially, um, that, just because we didn't have any other standards, that's just our normal building setbacks.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I don't...
Go ahead.
I don't believe, uh, I know there was a little bit of a change on this board. The last time we had a large industrial request was north on Highway 25, about five miles north of the truck stop, and there was a significant amount of people here to protest it. The first one was is that they were going to allow man camps in. The second one was it's going to be too much oil field development. And then the third one that they argued about was slaughterhouses. To have some standards for slaughterhouses, I'm all right with. Same with, uh, having some type of standards for, uh, high-impact areas, because that stuff just constantly comes every single time, and it's usually somebody that is opposed, claiming that the setback distances aren't well-defined or are still too close for their own personal property. And that includes everything from, uh, wind turbines on down. Where, when we have good established rules, it seems like there's less people to argue. So to have something for slaughterhouses, the high-impact one, if that waits for the subcommittee that's looking at, uh, carbon capture, I'm all right with that, too. But every one of our little towns has a landfill of some type that I'm aware of. This, you just never know when that kid all of a sudden raises its head again as, whoa, you didn't notice the big red sign that said you're building next to a landfill? And they will come back and then claim, uh, that they need abatement on their property taxes because their land values took a hit because they built next to a different facility. So, that's, I, I'm, I'm all right with, uh, regulations as long as the regulations are reasonable, and where all of a sudden don't put a, normally a legal business out of business because our restrictions are too strict.
So, Mr. Chairman, with all these things, do we have to come up with individual consensus here, or what? I mean, because we go all night long, and it's here...
Do you want to?
No, not really.
I, I feel we got, we should go to the next hearing.
I think, Natalie, you have, uh, I guess, some input, but I'd rather leave it to you where you'd like some more input, um, from us.
Yeah, and if anybody has more expertise about, uh, slaughterhouses, they, please, please, uh, contact me and give me your thoughts, because, um, it's very, uh, there's not a lot of information available to research on what makes sense.
And maybe getting some input, Natalie, from other...
Yeah.
Slaughterhouses in the area, like with the setbacks, because those are minimums that would then require variance and, I mean...
Yeah.
For the unloading areas, separation from residences.
Does the, does the ag department, did they have anything on this?
They, they don't talk about, um, there is a little report in here, um, USDA requirements. They, they have requirements about sanitation inside, you know, like sanitary practices and humane treatment of animals and stuff.
Yep.
They don't talk about siding at all, except that, you know, make sure you have enough space for your septic system. Um, don't put it in a location where you have odors or debris flying from, say, a landfill, you know, don't put it downwind from a landfill, just, you know, sense, sensible things, but nothing hard and fast in terms of zoning or siding.
Yeah.
And DEQ also, um, didn't seem to have a whole lot of, really, well, nothing really in terms of, uh, zoning setbacks, that kind of thing.
What else do you need from us?
Um, I guess, I can maybe think about it a little more in terms of number of animals or size or whatever. Um, again, going off of nothing in terms of availability of other ordinances. [laughing] But if members of the public and, uh, you know, other facilities have a, an opinion, I mean, the one in New Salem, for example, I think they're 20 feet from their property boundary. So I mean, if we're going by that, it's 20 feet, I would imagine that's probably similar. Um, you know, we're a little further out, so 50 is a typical rear yard setback. Um, that's why I put 50 in here, rather than 15 for a typical side yard. But maybe we don't care, maybe we want it to be 20 or 15 or whatever.
I don't know if it's a, yeah.
All right, you say don't care, just that we're letting, that we would be more inclined to just let it be a normal...
Just as, as we're crafting a standard, understanding those anecdotes, like in New Salem, and are there circumstances where 20 feet is acceptable?
Mm-hmm.
If it's done in a certain way?
Mm-hmm.
Right?
Yeah.
Things like that.
Yes, yep. And I think in most cases, like most regulation, you know, most people are very good actors and they want to do a good job, um, you know, and we're, um, like, like Andy said, I think when you have standards in here, it makes you more able to not have to be arbitrary when you're permitting something, and then it becomes, oh, well, the neighbors don't like that operation, and so they complain, and then if you have no standards, you know, then what is your basis for saying yes or no? I think it's easier when you have standards in here to say, okay, they're meeting the standards, so it's okay. Um, and not that I think it's going to go that way. Most people, I think, would probably be very supportive of a local, um, butcher shop, that we, we need more of them, so. But yes, we'll, we'll bring it back.
You're good?
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody have anything else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.